With the Board of Health agenda tonight, I'd remind people in the audience to turn your cellphone to silent or vibrate. And then let's please all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It sounded good having all the participation from the audience. Chris, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Strebe?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number three on March 19th, 2019, as presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
Is there a motion?
Move approval, Your Honor.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the lot located at 601 Spring Street.
Good evening, Kevin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The property was placarded August 10th, 2018. We do have some pictures here for viewing. August 10th, 2018, due to being occupied without being connected to utilities, there has been no action by the owner to submit a repair plan or to clean up the exterior of the property or mow the grass since the house had been placarded. Inspectors feel the location condition of the house makes it a candidate for demolition action.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this particular item, now is the time to step to the microphone. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 601 Spring Street, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 601 Spring Street.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second. Thank you. Any questions for Kevin? Hearing none, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any other business for the Board of Health? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move right into the regular city council meeting. And since it's the city council meeting, we need to take the role again.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Strebe?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda: Minutes from regular meeting number 15 on May 7th, 2019, as presented. Acknowledgement of April financial report and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Reappointment of Larry Jarvis to the Planning and Zoning Commission term to expire 4/1/2024. Appointment of Scott McCarty to the position of engineering supervisor effective 5/13/2019. Consideration of acknowledgement settlement agreement between the City of Atumwa and Hy-Vee Incorporated doing business as Hy-Vee C-Store at 2457 North Court Street. Approving the hourly rate scheduled for professional services between Beanstrang Kim and the City of Atumwa to develop estimates for a build grant application. Resolution number 89, 2019, authorizing the monthly budgeted transfers for June 2019 as authorized in the fiscal year 2019 budget. Resolution number 94, 2019, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the Atumwa Main Street Downtown Streetscape Project. Resolution number 110, 2019, setting June 18th, 2019, as the date of a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 411 Appenous. Resolution number 111, 2019, setting June 4th, 2019, as the date of a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property described as lots 51, 52, 53, and the west one-half of Lot 54, all in Manning's First Edition, commonly known as 1726, 1732, 1736, and 1744 Mabel Street. Resolution number 112, 2019, setting June 4th, 2019, as the date of a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 122 South Fellows. Resolution number 114, 2019, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the 2019 asphalt street repair program. Resolution number 115, 2019, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the 2019 catch base and replacement program. Resolution number 116, 2019, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the 2019 sanitary utility access program. Resolution number 117, 2019, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the 2019 sidewalk drop and detectable warning installation program. Resolution number 118, 2019, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance for the 2019 HMA PCC street crack repair program. Beer and/or liquor applications for African and Asian Bar LLC at 105 to 107 North Market Street, Parkview Plaza Hotel Atumwa at 107 East Second Street, Front Runners at 837 Church Street, Fraternal Order of the Eagles at 109 South Green Street, American Legion OB-Nelson Number Three at 550 West Main Street, Appenous Rapids at 332 East Main Street with outdoor service area. All applications pending final inspections.
Your Honor, I'd make a move, a motion to accept the consent agenda with pulling B6 and moving it to F3 with discussion.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Take the role, please.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item C, I need a motion for tonight's agenda with the adjustment we just made.
So moved.
Second.
Take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D, we added Blackbird a report and update to the council from Blackbird representatives. And we have some representatives in the audience tonight, so if you would step to the microphone, identify yourself. We'll give you some time to make a statement, and then we'll entertain questions from the council.
My name's Harry Doyle, and I'm a partner in Blackbird Investments.
And my name is Seth Seko. I'm the Director of Development for Blackbird Investments. Mayor Lozio, council members, city staff, as well as members of the public, we're here tonight to provide an update on the St. Joseph's project. First, though, we need to issue an apology for what has transpired since last August. We are sorry for the extended timeline, and also sorry for the gaps in communication. While there have been many things going on behind the scenes in terms of us trying to find a legal remedy to all of this, I understand none of that really matters to you guys. You would like to see progress on the site. That's why we're in town today. Blackbird is committed to the project that we embarked on earlier last year. The project is important to us as well as to me personally. I was actually born in Atumwa about 33 years ago. I was not born at the old hospital. I was born at the new hospital. My mother confirmed that. And about 15 years ago, to this day, I actually graduated from Peaking High School. So I still have relatives in the area, friends in the area. Beyond us being a developer from Des Moines, this actually has a personal connection to me. About five years ago, Blackbird identified the St. Joseph's site as a great location for housing. We embarked on a pre-development exercise to see if we could do a rehistoric rehabilitation of the project to introduce town home living, condominiums, excuse me. Along the way, we built a number of relationships, both locally and regionally. One of those is with the City of Atumwa. The City of Atumwa has been a strong partner to date. We've worked through a PUD plan. We've rezoned the site. We've had open dialogue on what really does this site need in terms of housing, but also green space, a park, a trail connection, new infrastructure. There's many assets or facets to this project. All this was commemorated in a development agreement signed last March. The development agreement contained a TIF mechanism as well as a $500,000 grant. The grant has been applied to the abatement and demolition of the project to date. All those funds have been spent on the project. In January of 2018, Blackbird officially purchased the site. We successfully completed the abatement phase of the project as well as the demolition of the nurses' quarters and one of the smaller structures. On July 9th of 2018, demolition of a larger hospital structure began. About a month in that demolition process, we received a bill from the demolition contractor stating that they were 90% done with the project. All of you have seen the site today, as well as us, and ultimately that called us into question to align billing with actual progress on site. This resulted in the contractor walking off the job, and we've been working since to find a legal remedy to the situation. With every project, there are ups and downs. The delays in this particular case are unacceptable, and we understand that. The City of Atumwa deserves better from us, and we are here to reaffirm our commitment to the project as well as the overall goal to accomplish housing on the site. With that, I'd like to introduce again Harry Doyle, one of the partners from Blackbird.
May I ask that you speak directly into the mic? Sometimes it doesn't come out very well. You gotta almost have it in your mouth to...
Thank you, Councilman Stevens. Thank you, Seth. And Mayor, members of the council, and members of Atumwa residents and guests, thank you for allowing us to speak with you this evening. It is our honor to be here. My name, as Seth said, is Harry Doyle, and I'm a partner in Blackbird Investments. So where do we go now? That's the question on everybody's mind. Everybody is either aware or aware now that we have been in dispute with Elder Construction about billing on the project. We have tried many times to reach resolution unsuccessfully, and both parties have realized that the only way to move forward was through binding arbitration, and we have mutually agreed to enter into binding arbitration to resolve our differences, which we will. The arbitration is set for later this year. That is unacceptable. That date will not work with our obligation to you and our obligation to the project. And so, we decided last January to take action, and we terminated Elder's contract. That was very important because that freed us up then to go back to the marketplace to obtain bids from another contractor to finish the job. The objective is to keep the project moving. We did that, and we are pleased to announce that Drish Construction of Fairfield has submitted an acceptable proposal to complete the project. We have subsequently signed, and both parties have signed, a contract and agreement to proceed. In addition to this process, we've been working in parallel with the engineering work to prepare for the second phase of the project. The second phase of the project is, once the hospital is torn down, we have to put in utilities, we have to put in the street, the curb, the gutter, the plating. We have to prepare for the houses, just as you've seen in developments elsewhere. Well, we have accomplished that in this time period. And in addition to that, we have received a bid from Drish Construction to do the second phase of the project, which we have agreed to. So we now have a contractor onboard to complete the project and to seamlessly move into the second phase project. We expect work to begin as soon as we can certify that the project work that had previously been committed, completed by Elder Construction is satisfactory to all parties. You can understand the difficulty of getting two contractors and a shared responsibility problem on a singular site that would tie things up even further. We have just recently received what we believe is sufficient to ensure to Drish and to us that we do have a clean, safe site for Drish to take control of, and we expect to be able to authorize him to proceed in the very near future. We have all expectations that demolition will begin this summer, midsummer. I know you all have questions, and we hope that... We've answered many of them, and we can certainly, we'll be willing to answer what questions you may have for us. But more importantly, and as importantly, and it's not more importantly, we believe this is the first step in rebuilding a strained relationship. A strained relationship that we take responsibility for perpetrating with the community and with the council. And we are earnest in our desire to move forward with the council and the community and complete this project. And we will complete this project with your assurance that that's what your wishes are also. I also want to point out that although the demolition of this hospital is huge and is the most important thing on our minds, we also have a big picture. And the big picture is to prove to other rural communities, our friends, our neighbors, and the state of Iowa that when developers, when city, when private interests come together, we can re-energize housing construction in our rural cities. This is a, this is a real need. I hesitate to say a critical need, but it's a real need to preserve the future, the economic livelihood of our cities and towns so that it's a safe place for our children to grow up. And at that point, I guess I'd like to say thank you, and we'll entertain questions, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Harry. Okay, council, let's go, Mark, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you for coming here, first of all. And there are a lot of questions that could be asked, but I, you know, from talking with folks that live in that area, and obviously, the media releases, both from Des Moines and from Atumwa, have alluded to from their interviews with the neighbors. Maybe the most important question, as it stands today, is can you reasonably assure the public that what's going, what's sitting there today is safe, both from an asbestos remediation standpoint, possible lead or dust, any other environmental hazards that might be there, as well as the physical conditions are there are safe from the general public to be able to enter into that facility as it stands today?
Thank you, Harry Doyle. I can assure the public that all of the hazardous materials have been removed from the hospital by a certified asbestos-led hazardous material contractor. That work has been completed, and the documentation is in hand that proves that the site is clean. In addition, the DNR has been on-site, and they do not have any issues either. So to our total understanding, we have a clean, safe site for the next phase of construction to begin.
What about the, what about the physical side of it? Is it possible for people to get into that, children specifically, to get into that, that area where the deconstruction has been taking place?
Sure. Yep, Seth Seko here. There is a fence around the site, as you're aware. Over time, the fence has been vandalized, but we have been checking it. And we had a call into the fence repair company. They will be doing any final repairs to it this week, as I understand.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions, comments? Holly?
You alluded to it, but clearly, there's been issues with communications, both with the city and the residents of Atumwa. Obviously, that can't be changed for what's been happening, what's happened in the past, but can you discuss what you're going to be doing here on out?
Councilman Berg, Harry Doyle, yes, thank you. Hindsight is always 20/20, and we take full responsibility because I believe what you just mentioned may singularly be one of the most significant things that was not accomplished, and I apologize for that. We are hugely motivated to not repeat the mistakes of the past and to create a process moving forward for communication, both from us to the residents and from the residents to us. We have specifically modified the website for this project. And Seth, maybe you can tell some of the specifics of how a con, how a resident would pose a question or a comment to us and how we might pose an answer back.
Yes, Seth Seko here. So the website for this project is livatumwa.com, and there's a forum on there where you can submit questions to us. There's also now a component where we will provide updates out to the community. We're looking to provide updates every two weeks, not just through the demolition and the restart of that, but also through the infrastructure phase as well as the actual construction of homes. That'll be the main conduit of providing regular updates to the city as well as the public.
Do you, sorry, a follow-up kind of with that. Do you foresee holding or working specifically with the neighborhood itself? I mean, I know they can reach out to you through that, or do you have other methods that you plan to do? Because that's our biggest issue, I think, right now, is that a lot of people feel like they haven't been heard.
Yes, understood. Seth Seko again. As far as communication with the neighbors, yes, we do owe them in direct communication. We're looking at options to do one through the mail as well as to have a public dialogue on that in the neighborhood in the near future.
Just a quick follow-up on that. The weekly updates, once this project resumes, I would assume would be coming from, from you all on the progress that's made and not through our administration?
We would intend to use the website as a dynamic way of posting for all to view what we have accomplished and what we intend to do. And we did believe it would be bi-weekly. There may be periods where we may want to... I guess, based on user feedback, because this is intended to be a dialogue, and bi-weekly is not sufficient, we can certainly move to a more frequent update. And perhaps sometimes the update is, we're here, we're listening to you, nothing new to report this week, other than it's moving forward. But whatever it is, that's, it doesn't matter as much as we have created that dialogue and we have open, fair communication, promptly responded to. And as I say, hindsight is 20/20. We did a really good job in the years leading up to the actual project. There was a stuttering, and it's death by a thousand blows, where we thought, oh, it'll just be another week and another week. And this, this took longer than any of us wanted, and I apologize for that. And if there's anything to be learned, it's what we don't repeat that occurred in the past.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, Your Honor. First of all, thanks for coming, coming down here and giving us a really detailed update and timetable, which is, I think, what most of us, including the residents in the area, were looking for. One thing that I just wanted to mention, that you probably already know, is a lot of the comments and stuff that I hear is, you know, we have a code of ordinances that we have for nuisance abatement. And we constantly get asked the question, and it's quite a legitimate question. If we, you know, hold all citizens accountable to that nuisance code, I think in the past, the city has worked very hard to work with people that are trying to abate their nuisances. So when we see a violation, I think the city usually, when they see, you know, action from the other party to clean it up, we give, you know, extended amounts of time. And I think that's been the case here as well. We know it's a very complicated, excuse me, development with a lot of moving parts, and so I certainly understand that. Can you kind of answer a question I have of moving forward until you say midsummer that demolition would continue? Have you taken steps to try to keep some of the other nuisances from creeping in, such as the grass height, certain things like that, until you can get a good handle on the demolition again?
Yep. Seth Seko, thank you. Councilman Dalby. As far as maintaining the site, yes, we've contracted with a lawn mowing company to mow the site. Right now, it's every 12 days. It's been a little wet recently. I think everybody's grass is growing quicker than we wish, but that will be taken care of. I know there's also some talks about some of the dead brush around the site, and we're working on making sure that's maintained as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Holly?
I think it would be helpful, you know, to explain to the public, it sounds like Drish is onboard to do the demolition, that you have the go-ahead, that it's a clean, safe site to be working on. So could you explain to the public why it's mid-July? What does, what does that timetable mean? What has to happen in between there?
Councilman Berg, Harry Doyle, yes. It, it sounds like that's a long ways away. It's really just a few weeks. We probably have our attorney, we have to allow him, we're pushing him. If he can get it done in a week, week and a half, I think we've done well. There's, there's a lot to review, to be honest with you. And then Drish is not, Drish is a great contractor, and they, we have kept in communication with him. And he has asked us things like, I've got this job, should I take this job? And says, and so what we will do is notify him, but we need to give him the respect to be able to say, thank you, and thank you for your notification, and I can be there in 12 working days, or whatever he may be. We won't know what that is until we can physically make that call and say, green light, which we expect to be able to make very soon. So that adds up to midsummer, just right there. It's, it's pushing the project along and pushing it well ahead of arbitration, which was a drop, a unacceptable date.
Seth, you're the finance man, so I think one of the questions that has surfaced in the media has been, what's the financial arrangement? And would you share what you're comfortable sharing with the audience and with us? I think there's some misunderstanding about economic development. It's very difficult work, very risky work. Everything we do has been done out in the open and has been reviewed by our bonding attorneys in Des Moines. So give us a rundown of what's going on with the financing.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Lozio. Seth Seko here. So yes, as far as the finance of the project goes, it's... Thank you. As far as financing for the project goes, it started with development agreement with the City of Atumwa. As part of that, there was a half-million-dollar grant for the demolition of the project. That grant has been applied to the abatement and demolition work done to date. Also, as part of the development agreement, there was a TIF component, tax increment financing. This is something that the state of Iowa allows for cities to choose to help further spur development. In this case, we entered into the agreement with the City of Atumwa, and that'll come from the future tax rules of the project. So we are using that to also help finance the project. Beyond demolition, the rest of the financing of the project is in place. So we're looking forward to starting this thing and then moving forward with it.
Has, has Blackbird put any of their own money into the project?
Yes, we have. We talked about this earlier, at least a half-million dollars on the Blackbird side. I know in the public sphere, it's come out what we've paid Elder. There's also expenses beyond that. We've been working with a civil engineer, we've been working with a design team. Basically, a lot of the groundwork for this project has already been done, and the expenses incurred.
Would you... Go ahead, Skip. Would you make that more clear? I hear a lot on the street about the $500,000, and what they're saying is not correct. Would you spell that out, the $500,000 grant?
Sure. Yes. So the grant, as it's written in our development agreement, of $500,000 was to come to the developer to be used for the abatement, remediation of the site, as well as demolition.
And that was from the Legacy Foundation?
Correct.
Yeah. See, that's not clear out in the community, and thanks for clearing that up.
Okay. Yep. And so that's been applied to the project and spent today.
And then the also, the thing that's not clear is there's a mortgage and a loan to Blackbird?
Yes, there is. Yeah. So there is this $800,000 number floating around out there. When Blackbird purchased the property, we chose, as owner of the property, to pull a mortgage against it. This would be no different than having a mortgage on your home. In this case, it was with the seller of the property, and that's for $800,000. That is a liability to Blackbird. It's not a grant into the project.
Okay. Okay. Your Honor, I have another question. Sure. Go ahead, Matt.
Back to demolition. With the new contractor, demolition contractor, what do you have as far as a timeframe for when that contractor starts demolition, the time he's required to complete it, pending there's no other, you know, acts of God or unforeseen things that come about?
Yes. Thank you. I'll give Seth a chance to get his voice back. The, Harry Doyle. The contract with Drish states very firmly, and with his agreement, that 70 days is required for him to complete his work to a flat site. That'd be 70 working days. So it should, it will happen very quickly once he's on site. I believe he is capable. He is aware of the challenge. There is no expectation that he will not perform on time or perhaps ahead of time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff or comments? Kevin? Kevin?
Thank you, Your Honor. To be clear about the $500,000 grant, that grant came from Legacy Foundation, yes, but it came to the city, and it was placed in the city's Community Development Fund, and it came from the Community Development Fund into the contract with the city and, and Blackbird. But the grant literally came from the city to Blackbird as part of our development agreement. It's in, it's in our development agreement. But the grant was from Legacy to the city for, for black remediation purposes and the not. Now, the city could have used that money for other purposes. Once it comes to the city, it becomes public funds. But we chose to enter, you know, use it this way, entering into this agreement and do this, to do this specific black remediation, asbestos and the like. So just wanted to make that clear.
Any other questions from council or other staff?
Andy?
Mr. Mayor, one of the items that, that when mention was made of providing these weekly updates, which seems to me to make a good decision, this is obviously council, they, they can weigh in on this as well. I would, I would suggest that they provide those weekly updates to us. I would send them to the city clerk's office more directly there. Obviously, the keeper of the notes and the books and the documents, merely a recommendation, but if you're going to forward them, putting on the website is all good and well, but I, I think would be more expeditious and forthright to send them to the city clerk's office.
Good, good suggestion. Go ahead, Victor. Are you okay? Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, well, thank you very much for your report tonight. We'll be in contact with you. We are working through a few other details and appreciate the fact that you're going to make a, a much different effort to communicate with the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on City Administrator Morris and have him talk to us about the Neapolitan Lab.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. The updates, I'll, I'll go through these briefly, as I've done previously. Brian McMillan from Neapolitan Labs is going to be at City Hall on the 24th of this month, and he's going to provide us an update on the website and reach out to staff. If council members are interested in attending that meeting, that's going to be during the day. I don't have this specific timeline. I want to say it's 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning, but he's going to be meeting with us again to discuss some of those, some of those updates that have taken place with them. And I think so far, my staff perspective, we've been pleased with our work and outreach at the folks at, at Neapolitan Labs. That's gone well. So if you're interested in attending that meeting, please share that with myself or Katie King or administrative assistant. The next item you see is Senator Grassley will be in the council chambers on the 30th of this month. That'll be at 9:30 a.m. Mayor, as I recall, you, I believe you received a call from his office, and it's my understanding as well, this is part of the 99 county tour visit. I don't know that he, my understanding is it's going to be more of a Q and A. So anyway, just to let folks know about that. The next item you see is Parks Foundation. This was an item that was discussed, it's been discussed a couple times in front of the park board, more specifically at their most recent meeting on the 14th of this month, and that was creating a foundation to help fund some of their projects. You know, the Legacy Foundation obviously has that role, responsibility to raise certain funds, to capitalize projects. That, that is all good and well, that is a rather arduous task. It, it takes an incredible amount of time. I have a little bit of background in that myself. In addition to that, our city attorney and HR director, who is not looking for additional tasks, and I don't blame her, that's, that's something we will move on, but I will tell you, that's not likely going to be something you're going to see take shape this summer, I would argue even, if that's a fair statement. But just want to put that in perspective for council. That is an item that, that the Parks Board is working on, and I believe I've included that in two of the weekly reports. Finally, the solar panel feasibility study with Ideal Energy. I appreciate the input, not only from Dwight Dolman, our city engineer, but obviously Larry Seals. We've had more than a couple of conference calls with the folks at Ideal Energy, Michael Hawley and his folks, and they're going to be with us, as it says there, printed pretty clearly, to give a presentation on what their study has found, just to give you somewhat of a peek towards this. And this is an item that I've included in the weekly reports. There essentially are two areas that they concentrated their efforts on. One was Bridgeview, the facility, and the other was Beach Atumwa. I will tell you, and you've seen from, maybe not the reports, but certainly what I, I've picked up and shared with council on, on the last two reports anyway, is you're likely going to see their recommendation is going to be a battery system that's going to be specific to the Bridgeview Center, and likely solar panels on the roof of the indoor pool facility over at Beach Atumwa. They're going to go into that at a little bit greater length. This is not, this is going to be a rather long, arduous process. One of the items we need to discuss, not the least of which, the big, the big item, is how they're financed. Because we can either finance those ourselves, or we can look to investors, and as many of the council members are aware, some of the incentives that were provided in the past for purchasing these solar panels are either being phased out or going by the wayside. So I say all that to say this, that will simply be a, a, an update from these folks to make their recommendations in front of council, and I expect us to give some, this consideration probably for the next couple of months. Mayor, council, that's all I have. If you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to entertain those.
Okay, thank you, Andy. I'd mean our agenda, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to talk about an item on the agenda, need to fill out a slip and give it to our clerk. I didn't see any come up. I want to be sure people have the opportunity. Okay, there's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting, too. Let's go to departmental recommendations. Chris?
Presentation of certificates of appreciation for Make Atumwa Shine Initiative. Recommendation, present certificates of appreciation.
Good evening, Jody. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Last month, we completed our Make Atumwa Shine campaign. It was week-long, and it encompassed Earth Week or Earth Day. And as usual, our, our community rose to the challenge, and we had over 150 volunteers to help give, give the community a little face, a little facelift, you know, after the hard winter that we all experienced. So this evening, we have a number of those volunteers here, and we would like to recognize them with certificates and also with badges. So if I could have the mayor come down? So they are in order. Okay, so our, our first group of folks is Scout Troop 2. If we could have Noah Massey and Ron Langen and Angela Massey come up? I just need to get out of the way. Troop 2, along with the Scout Troop 219 and PAC 2, all cleaned up the Finley entrance to Wildwood Park. They went through the play area and across the bridge. And then if we could also have Hannah Massey come up? She's in that pile. And also from PAC 2, Lorenzo Silva, Elian Silva, Hannah Snook, and Melissa Snook. Uh huh, they're in that group. Hannah Snook and Melissa Snook. Yes, there are two Silvas, Lorenzo and Elian, and I may be not saying that right. Elian, thank you. And their badges? All right. So if we could give Scout Troop 2 and Troop 219 and PAC 2 a round of applause. And now we're looking for Girl Scout Troop 205, Kaylee Kirkpatrick, Megan Prado, Cheyenne Tillman, Kaitlyn Perry. And then we have a troop leader, Amy Kirkpatrick, and Tammy Hopwood, if you would all come This group cleaned up Shawl Street entrance to Wildwood Park, and then they went to the disc golf area. So basically, with the work from all these scouts, they took care of Wildwood Park. Okay, and could we give them a round of applause, folks? So our next group is the American Heritage and Trail Life Group, and let's have American Heritage youth members, Joyce Lynn Davis and Caitlin Shoemaker and Mackenzie Fisher come up, along with their adult members, Veronique Shoemaker, Yolanda Fisher, and Sarah No, they're, they're probably at the beginning here. And then we also have Leah Ziegler, Ashley Kane, if you two would come up also. Did you, after Ashley Kane, that was all? Yes. Okay. And our next group are the Trail Life youth members. We have Brandon Shoemaker, Zachariah Shoemaker, Joshua Shoemaker, and Timothy Shoemaker, Chayton Gates, James Gates, Caleb Ziegler, and Quentin Dalzell, Daisel, and also Brother And then we also have Art. And did you already get Samantha Kane? Okay. All right. So I guess I should say where you guys, basically, this group cleaned up the trails area from the Bridgeview Center to John Deere, and you did a wonderful job. The Gateses? How could you forget them? Come on. Uh huh. The Gates kids? Did you get Jonah Dalzell?
Yes.
Okay. And Art? And Quentin? Who are we missing? Okay, now they need their, okay, great. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I know that we have another scout here, Janelle Eskew from Troop 609, and she's probably at the very end of this group. And then do we have anybody here from US Bank? No? Okay. I know that we have, or did have Brad Grief. Brad Grief, the Grief and Dalby families also cleaned up. So we're looking for the Grief and Dalby families, and they have a, probably have one of these little things. Okay. Uh huh. And we have a Holly Berg and a Corey McDonald. And even though he's not finished with all of his areas, we do have a certificate for Andy Morris. He's promised he will complete them. So is there anyone out in the audience who is here for a certificate? And I didn't call your name. Dwight Dolman, Dwight and Deb Dolman? No one else? Okay. The mayor will be at Wilson School on Friday to hand out their certificate and their badges. And we would, once again, like to thank everybody for your hard work and your dedication. We appreciate it. Love seeing you back every year. Give yourself a round of applause.
Again, thank you all very much for the work you do, and the volunteer spirit is live and healthy in Atumwa. We appreciate that. Chris?
Atumwa Community School District proposed update to the school resource officer agreements with the city of Atumwa effective July 1, 2019. Recommendation, reject the school district's proposed update, retain the current agreements.
Here's the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second. Good evening, Chief. You have the floor.
Good evening, council and mayor. The Atumwa Community School District has proposed changes to how much the school district will pay to have three school resource officers. The current agreements have different formulas for what the school pays and what the city pays for each officer. The school district is requesting an equal share cost of 50/50 of the total salary and benefit costs of an officer at the second-year wage rate. Under the current agreement formulas for the 2019-2020 budget year, the city would pay $67,500 towards the cost of the three school resource officers. The school district's proposal would result in the city paying an additional $74,000 towards the cost of the three school resource officers. Staff is recommending that we reject this proposal.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
I've, I've got a few comments, Your Honor.
Okay.
So just so everybody's aware, I had requested in advance some statistics from Chief McAndrew and the Atumwa Police Department on the number of arrests that were made at both Evans and OHS over the last three years. Obviously, this year's not completed yet. In looking at that, and bear in mind, the, the chief reminded me prior to the meeting that, that the numbers that I'm about to mention don't count investigations, they only count arrests. So at Evans, over the last two years, assault arrests have doubled. Drug and alcohol arrests have more than doubled. Drug and alcohol arrests have more than doubled. Weapons arrests have doubled. Disorderly conduct arrests have doubled. The population stayed the same there. So it's not an increase in the student population that's causing that rise. It's just the population. At OHS, we've arrested more for assault. Drug and alcohol arrests have increased 12-fold. Disorderly conduct is exactly where it was. And again, the population has stayed stagnant compared to two years ago. At the end of the year, we're probably going to even increase those more. What's disturbing to me is we have two officers at OHS, we have one officer at Evans. Evans has 23% less students than OHS. In some cases, they're doubling the crime statistics with half the officers. Evans has outpaced OHS two years for arrests. My trouble with the contract that was presented to the Atumwa Police Department from the school district, that it isn't even logical to suggest, based on these statistics here, again, came from the police department, that we would, given the fact that they've made no measurable changes in their procedures there, that we would have crime going down at those facilities. As a matter of fact, statistically speaking, the probability of crime is going to increase, it's not going to decrease. So the idea that the Atumwa School District would compromise the number of officers that are there by putting forth a contract that, in my opinion, is completely unacceptable, is just, again, not logical. And what's really frustrating to me is we're looking at almost a $300,000 contract, and there doesn't seem to have been any communication other than presenting the contract. I don't see any representation from the school district here tonight for defense of this. So it's, again, this whole thing is really disturbing to me, why the school wouldn't have somebody here to give their side of the argument, other than to save the money going forward. And I just want to make it really clear that when this gets rejected, you know, if we have to pull an officer out of the schools because we can't come to an agreement on this, I would suspect that the school district is going to have some questions to answer to the parents as to why the schools are going to become less safe as a result.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just.
Yes, go ahead, Andy.
This is a council discussion, I don't want to intervene on this by any stretch. But I do want to point out, and I shared this with council, I spoke with Nicole Quaker, the school superintendent, this morning, and then I shared with council, and if news media would like to see that, the tenants of the conversation we had and what she indicated they would likely, I think Councilman Rowe's point is well taken. But I do want to let you know, I did reach out to her, we had a very good conversation and difference of opinion, but we did have a conversation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then.
Got a comment to make.
Go ahead, Matt.
I got to read the staff summary here, and I think as a city, we understand more so now with this council the importance of keeping your budget in line. However, in 1994, I witnessed a tragedy at the Atumwa High School. And it's one that I wouldn't wish to anybody to see. So I certainly hope an agreement can be reached where we keep our schools staffed with our three SROs. Because I think the community is seeing what can happen when we don't have that extra police presence up there. So I hope that an agreement gets reached, and like I said, we all understand how a budget works, and we've got to make the pieces fit. But this hopefully is certainly not an area where you want to skimp on the money or the coverage for the kids. So that's all I have, Your Honor, just a comment.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Okay, if there's no other comment or discussion, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we'll move to F3. That was part of the consent agenda, we moved to F3 on our agenda, so.
Approving the hourly rate schedule for professional services between Beanster and Kim and the city of Atumwa to develop estimates for a build grant application.
Good evening, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. During the past several years, multiple downtown partners have developed general concept plans to redevelop in the downtown riverfront areas. Major components would include continued development of the complete streets along Main Street Quarter, branching off to include Cork, Washington, and Marion Street. Public Works in conjunction with V&amp;K would develop cost estimates for the proposed street redevelopment and parking improvements under this proposed hourly rate schedule. This information will then be used as one component to develop a full build grant application. The first phase of the engineering service is estimated to be somewhere around $24,500. Regional planning staff, in coordination with Legacy, will develop all other needed information, such as environmental assessments and the BCA. Other major components include multiple housing development complexes, which are currently being pursued by our planning department, redevelopment of the Amtrak station, Bolingal Park area, muni parking lot, and sewer and storm infrastructure as needed. We plan on coming back in the future and go across, once we have all of these estimated costs, of all the details. This is a complex grant. Originally, we were going to try to submit this cycle, which was July 15. As we got into this, it just wasn't feasible to pull all the information together. This grant can leverage private investment for offset in the grant match. That's something that Kevin's been working on, probably at least a year, on some of the developments in housing that's been proposed in several of the parking lot areas and downtown areas. So this will allow us to get started. Again, we had a meeting yesterday with all the partners, and we're going to actually recommend that we move this back, or we already have, to the following year. That gives us time to actually develop a complete application. And again, this is a very complex grant application process, very similar to the last one that we had with FEMA, that, you know, we ended up taking almost four years to develop and ended up with about a $19 million project in federal funds. So with that said, again, we'll come back, we haven't determined what date, if that's two weeks or four weeks, but we want to come back at some sort of work session presentation, give all of the layouts and stuff. One of the things that I did was hand out, I don't know which of the council members had the original Legacy Foundation study, it has a lot of good graphical information, but that's something that we want to expand upon at the presentation, and then be able to give more information out to the public and the council.
Any questions for Larry? Appreciate the staff's recommendation. It's a monumental process to get that kind of information, and certainly in that short period of time, so thank you for making a recommendation.
Lot of moving parts on this one.
Okay, we'll look forward to hearing from you again in the future, then. So is there a motion on the floor to approve the hourly rate to get started on some of the work that will need to be done?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the sale of city-owned property located at Lot 11 in Devon's addition to the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, accepting the south 41 feet, commonly known as 206 East Court.
Good evening, Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Janice Rutledge offered the city $250 for a vacant lot located at 206 East Court Street. Ms. Rutledge would, wants to use that lot as an additional yard space for her house next door, probably to be transferred by quitclaim deed and the viability of the cost of publishing, public hearing notice, and the recording fees.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wants to address this particular item, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 87, 2019, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at Lot 11 in Devon's addition to the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa, accepting the south 41 feet, commonly known as 206 East Court, to Janice Rutledge for the sum of $250. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 87, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Any questions for Kevin? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed adoption of the Amendment Number Eight to the Westgate Economic Development Urban Renewal Plan.
Kevin, can you have the floor?
Thank you, Your Honor. The portions of amendment we would be considering for our urban renewal plan, an area, are not to exceed $4 million for the BBC Hotel project. Of course, we anticipate that those, that 20-year rebatement deal there would probably run into somewhere around 3.2 to 3.5. But that is a not-to-exceed number. And our allotment for what we're calling in this the Market Street Mixed Use and Riverwalk area, kind of, would be not to exceed 8 million. And that would be a total for the projects in and around that area, around what we call the muni lot. That would include a lot of things that would be publicly dedicated afterwards, like trail portions and pedestrian nodes and things of that nature, as well as public streets, sidewalks that might exist otherwise as well. And of course, incentives that we might offer to potential developers for what I would call your postmodern mixed-use kind of stuff, which is going to be elevation commercial mixed with some elevation under-story parking, as well as upper-story housing, market-rate housing on our upper-story areas. It's all the rage, it's what everybody's doing, of course, and the retail rental, and really, sales market is kind of alight with this stuff in downtown areas right now. That and townhomes. Now, some of that also includes townhomes. As you've seen the plan, on the other side of the road, there's some townhome portions down by the river in small pieces, portions maybe in groups of five, six, eight, three, depending on the size of the city-owned lots, down through there. The other portion was Washington Street area, which is going to be around the Bolingal Park area, our Washington Street parking lot. Same kind of concepts on Washington Street parking lot, elevation, commercial, perhaps parking, upper-story living. There are two structures on the muni lot, there would be one structure at the Washington Street area that would be related to that upper-story mixed-use kind of concept. Some of the rest of it could be commercial in nature. It's hard to say right now, we're still kind of shopping this notion out to developers. We will be coming up with RFPs to bring to you for release, for your blessing for release, that will be related to some of these projects in short order here. But as Larry very well stated, that very complicated bit of notions that are involved in this grant thing, and it's kind of, it's multimodal, but it also includes some commercial aspects. The match for this grant, unlike most grants, can come in the form of the entirety of public-private partnerships. So if we have a public-private partnership for a project that has an overall cost of 10 or 15 million, that whole amount can be used as a bit of match for the grant. So it's very advantageous that we get out there and shop around. So RFPs will be put out for that. For the Washington Street area, that's a not-to-exceed 4.5 million. And again, in that situation, you have a lot of public goods privately developed, but afterward dedicated that are public goods, sidewalk, maybe some streetscape lighting. Any streetscape kind of portions that we do down through there, we're kind of right now considering to be streetscape light, in the sense that there's not the infiltration focus, it's more public utility kind of focus. But your total is around 16 million, but it's spread in a lot of different directions, so I would entertain any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just entertain one item, Kevin, we talked about this, and that goes back to the second paragraph of the staff summary, and that's specific to the Bridgeview Hotel, and again, based on our conversations, just to be clear with the public, that's not likely going to be a project you're going to see until probably spring of 2020, based on what we've heard from estimates, and we talked about that this morning at staff.
Yeah, right now, I should probably just throw an update in there, we didn't include that tonight, the, either the land lease option there or the development agreement, obviously, because it looks like that we're going to go back to pencil on that from an engineering perspective. And Ryan Construction is going to seek some savings in this project. They're working with Chris Row and looking at engineering options in order to try to do that, to kind of bridge the gap between what we're offering and what's on the table already as far as investiture in the project. We do feel pretty confident they're going to be able to come with something productive out of that, productive in the sense that we are able to continue our relationship and sign on to that. We do feel, and Joni and I, in conversation, I think most of us in conversation, feel like it would be smarter to push this project, and inevitably, this project is creeping towards a 2020 kind of look, perhaps even 2021, a construction start. Hard to say that right now, because we'll engage in engineering after we've signed on, and that could take another couple of months. I think we'll know from our penciling expedition in about three to four weeks.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin? Let's, is there anybody in the audience that wants to comment on this particular item? Then let's close the public hearing portion.
Move to close, Your Honor.
Second.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution Number 113, 2019, determining an area of the city to be economic development and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area as necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designing such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number Eight to the Westgate Economic Development Urban Renewal Area. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 113, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second.
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Resolution Number 86, 2019, establishing fees for rental housing permits and inspections in the city of Atumwa, Iowa, and rescinding Resolution Number 214, 2017. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 86, 2019.
Is there a motion?
If the recommendation is presented, Your Honor.
Second.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are proposing an increase in rental inspection fees from $30 per unit per year to $50 per year for units of one and two, and 40 per year for units three and over. So it's not a huge increase in what our rental fees have been over the last quite few years here, but we feel like it'll help us cover what are the magnitude of our costs related to performing the service. $49,550 is our estimated increased revenue for this. This revenue will go to the general fund. So, entertain any questions? I have also, I should say, met with the Landlords Association to discuss it, and so we did get some feedback there. And so we look forward to continuing to work with our landlords in our community.
Any questions for Kevin?
Your Honor, I got one quick question.
Sure.
You said this covers the majority of staff time? That this is what this really captures, right? That covers pretty much everything that we have to do on our end, and you looked into that and made sure the dollars matched, so we're good on that?
Yes, we are qualified for what we're spending with these fee increases, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Should be going forward for some time.
Yeah. No other questions, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 105, 2019, establishing fees for building permits in the city of Atumwa, Iowa, and rescinding Resolution Number 177, 2016. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 105, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Kevin, you want to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Our building fees are increases related to, we have been using the per-square-foot cost related to 2001 code, and what we're doing here is going, looking at a five-year period where we're trying in the spirit of what we've been period where we're trying, in the spirit of what we've been trying to do lately, to get our, our revenues caught up with our costs, is that we go from the 2001 schedule, per-square-foot estimated costs, according to the building structure, and building fee structure inside of our building, International Building Code, and we go to the 2005 this year, and we do that for two years, and we come back, and we, and we move to the 2008, and three years later, we move to the 2011, and then we reassess five years from now and see where we're at. That's kind of what our proposition is here overall, right now, we're just making the first step of it. You won't be committing tonight to that whole schedule, you'll just be committing tonight to move from the 01 to the 05, the first step in it.
Any questions for Kevin? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 107, 2019, establishing fees for planning and development services in the City of Atumwa, Iowa, and rescinding resolution number 94, 2016. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 107, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Matt.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Your Honor. These fees are not based on square foot, it's, these are more zoning fees and the like, haven't been increased, I think, in some time. Our, our fees here are, are quite comparable on a, on a regional, even state level, I would say lower than most, and comparable to some, you know, we, it's been so long, I think, so we kind of fell back there, but a little more in line with what you see out there in other communities as well, so.
Any questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 119, 2019, approving the professional services agreement between Garden and Associates LTD and the City of Atumwa, in the amount of $300,000 for the Atumwa Main Street Downtown Streetscape Project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 119, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Go ahead, Larry.
Garden and Associates Limited will be performing construction observation, limited construction administration, and construction survey and staking services. Work hours are estimated, and based on an average of 40 hours a week for construction observation, five hours a week average for construction administration and oversight, and construction staking services as needed for 32-week construction season in 2019 and 2020. Reimbursable expenses will be billed at the attached rate. Total estimated fee is $300,000. Garden and Associates standard rate schedule is attached and will be adjusted in March of 2020. Build expenses will be divided between the funding sources allocated, and then I repeated all the funding and known expenses to date from the original passage of this project.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 120, 2019, approving change order number one, and accepting the work as final and complete, and approving the final pay request for the 2019 RFP number four, Montag Lane Concrete Project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 120, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Go ahead, Larry.
Clear Company and Concrete of Atumwa, Iowa, has awarded the contract for 2019 RFP number four, Montag Lane Concrete Project on March 5, 2019, in the amount of $6,110. Change order one increases that contract amount by $313.02 for quantity adjustments, and the new contract amount is $6,423.02. The contractor has completed the above referenced work according to the request for proposals, and this will authorize change order one and release all retainage and final payment.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry.
Ordinance number 3156, 2019, amending chapter 14 entitled Fire Protection and Prevention by amending section 14313 and section 143110, and by adding new subsection 143137 of the municipal code of the City of Atumwa, Iowa, as set forth hereafter. Recommendation passed the first consideration of ordinance number 3156, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Good evening, Chief Miller, you have the floor.
Thank you. This, this process started about three years ago, in July of 16, the city council adopted the 2015 International Fire Code, where fire safety operational permits was in it. In 17, March of 17, I came back to the council and said, you know, we're going to, we want to expand this thing to include additional businesses. The estimate at the time was 150 to 200 businesses, and at that time, I said I'd be coming back to the council to increase the fees. Since 2006, the $35 fees have been the same fee for all these years. Things have went up in the last, you know, last 16 years, there's, there's basically, we're bringing to the council like two changes, one is increase the fee from $35 to $50, the second fee is having the inspection instead of every year, having it done every other year. That's pretty much the two, we're going to add two things when we start doing these permit, permitting, is we're going to put an occupancy load on, in the business, and we're going to have a laminate the license or the permit, so it'll be in the business also.
Any questions for Chief? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Wait the second and third consideration, pass and adopt ordinance number 3156, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Any questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Resolution number 109, 2019, establishing a fire safety operational permit and fees associated with implementation of such permit. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 109, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Any questions for the Chief? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Item J is, thank you, Chief. Item J on our agenda is the opportunity for people to make comments about any item of city business. Chief, you want to make a comment?
I'd love to make a comment. Last Wednesday, I had written a grant to Riverside Casino, which is a Riverside County Foundation grant, for replacing, just by replacing our boat, and we went up there, I went up there, I wrote the grant, and they, I was requested to bring two people with me and their spouses, and they didn't know them by name, but they knew who they was. So Rich Dam and Tanya went, and Will Muddly and Michelle went up there to accept $10,000 grant from the Riverside Foundation Committee, and we were very happy. They gave away, they had 73 people write a grant, they gave away about 25 grants, and we was the only one of the 25 that accepted a check that night. Want to know why, we wrote a check, so we had to get up there and tell them, we lost, almost lost two people, and it was, it was pretty awesome. So we did receive a $10,000 check. We also received a $2,500 check from Walmart for the same, for the same boat, and we also received $10,000 from Wapalo County Supervisors, so we're, you know, we're doing okay on replacing this boat, and we're pretty happy about that, so.
Show that off? Yeah. Very good. Thanks, Chief. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council? Are there any council that want to make comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that the canteen eating contest is June 1st, and spoken with people down at the canteen, Scott Pierce, Ms. Dent, looks like they especially need help at 3 o'clock, so either contact someone at the canteen, or Fred Zeziger at Main Street, or Shay Griner at the Chamber, and any volunteers and the mayor's comment, the spirit of volunteering is alive and well, that'd be a great event to come out and see and, and have those folks get some help.
Thank you for that reminder. Also, would like to take the opportunity to thank Councilwoman Berg for the work she did on the Streetscape kickoff, 125 dinosaur eggs. I think that was a tremendous success, and want to compliment Main Street and all the partners that helped us pull that off, the businesses that cooperated.